All right, I'd like to call the regular board meeting of education, which is duly noted on April 21st, to order. Mr. Millard, Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you Superintendent Holsman. It's my pleasure to introduce Kurt Krieger, the principal of Franklin Middle School. Mr. Krieger has spent his entire 29-year career at the Janesville School District. He started as a physical education teacher at Roosevelt Elementary School. Kurt then went to Franklin Middle School and taught health and was the academic learning coach for nine years. In 2009, Mr. Krieger became the principal at Jefferson Elementary and remained the principal for 12 years. Kurt is currently starting his second year as the principal of Franklin Middle School. Mr. Krieger has a Bachelor of Science degree from UW-Lacrosse, a Master's in Education Leadership from Cardinal Stretcher, and is working on his doctorate at Edgewood College. Who do you have with you this evening, Mr. Krieger?
Thank you Commissioner Millard. It's my pleasure to introduce Brooklyn and Alejandra. These are two spectacular examples of outstanding students. Their participation, hard work, and willingness to help their friends is something that all of our students should strive for. They take pride in their work, their school, and their community. They're excellent students, shows kind of in their extracurricular activities too. Brooklyn is a basketball player, a soccer player. She's in band. She plays the drums. She has a drum kit at home because dad hears it all the time. She enjoys mountain biking. Alejandra likes art, music. She plays the ukulele, the piano, the guitar. She's in choir. She was in our Beauty and the Beast musical last spring. She plays volleyball and soccer. Both of these kids actively participate in class, attentive, and are willing to ask and answer questions, are well behaved, follow school rules, are polite and respectful to staff and students alike, and hold themselves to very high levels and are accountable. These are two of some of Franklin's finest that I'd like to introduce to you. All right. Right on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just like to say that I love the fact that she's a drummer because... But they have T-shirts now that says, "I went to the drum show in Chicago a couple of years ago and it says, 'Hit Like a Girl.'" Yeah, very cool, very cool. Thank you.
Awesome. Very great. Do I have a motion to adopt the April 25th, 2023 Board of Education Agenda as presented? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, we are going to go through our annual reorganization of the Board of Education. So the first process of reorganization is that the superintendent will call for nominations for the position of President. After the board selects a president, then I will turn the rest of the meeting over to the president. And we have a script here that will help the president move forward. So with that, I have to ask three times for nominations. It doesn't mean that I'm disagreeing with any of them. I just have to go through the procedure. So I will start with, is there a call for nominations? Are there any nominations for President for the Board of Education?
I nominate Michelle Hayworth.
Yes, I have a nomination. Are there any other... That's all right, fine. Any other nominations for President of the Board of Education? Are there any further nominations for President of the Board of Education? Okay, I have one nomination. So hearing none, nominations are all closed. So all those in favor of the election of Michelle Hayworth as President of the Board of Education, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I declare Michelle Hayworth as the President of the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you for the confidence. I do want to take a second though to thank Kathy and recognize the time that you've put into the president position the last couple of years. It's often a thankless position. It's a lot of work. And you led us through two interesting years. And sometimes they were, you know, some interesting meetings and you always kept it calm and you were a great leader through that. Thank you for that. And I hope you enjoy more time as a grandma. So can we give Kathy a round of applause? It's truly a big thing. Sorry, Mark, where were we? We're at the president. Hand the gavel to the president. Flip the page. All right. I'm gonna, this time I'm gonna call for nominations for the Vice President of the Board of Education.
I nominate Kevin Murray.
Are there any further nominations for the President, Vice President of the Board of Education?
I nominate myself.
Are there any further nominations for the Vice President of the Board of Education? Hearing none, more than, so we need to have each board member will vote for one person and the ballots will be collected and tallied. Oh, yeah.
I lost my nominee. I'm sick.
By a vote of five to three, Kevin Murray is our new Vice President. Okay, I declare Kevin Murray as the Vice President of the Board of Education. At this time, I'm gonna call for nominations for the Clerk of the Board of Education. Are there any further nominations for the Clerk of the Board of Education? Are there any further nominations for the Clerk of the Board of Education? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of the election of Lisa Herda as the Clerk of Board of Education, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. I declare Lisa Herda as the Clerk of the Board of Education. Thank you, Lisa. At this time, I'm gonna call for nominations of the Treasurer of the Board of Education.
I'll nominate Greg Ardry.
Are there any further nominations for the Treasurer of the Board of Education? Are there any further nominations for the Treasurer of Board of Education? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of the election of Greg Ardry as a Treasurer of the Board of Education, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. I declare Greg Ardry as a Treasurer of the Board of Education. Thank you, Greg. Oh, sorry, eight to zero. Sorry, eight to zero. Commissioner, yes, John is gone. Going on to Addendum 1.5, Safety Message, Lisa Herda.
Now I'm on. Okay, thank you. I'll make mine brief and short, but I also believe in this world that if you put words out in the universe, hopefully they come to fruition. So I know it might be early for many of you, but I'm gonna talk about summer safety, heat tips, because I want the heat to come. So just some safety tips regarding hot weather predictions, especially if you're inside, to stay indoors and in an air-conditioned environment as much as possible, just to make sure that your body has a high tolerance, especially if your body has a high tolerance for heat. Drink plenty of fluids, but avoid beverages that contain alcohol, caffeine, or a lot of sugar. Eat more frequently, but make sure those meals are balanced and light. Never leave any person or pet in a parked vehicle. Avoid dressing small babies in heavy clothing or wrapping them in warm blankets. Especially check on, frequently on people who are elderly, ill, or who may need help. If you need or know of someone that might need help, arrange to have a family, friends, or neighbor check in with them at least once or twice a day throughout the warm weather periods. And make sure your furry little friends have plenty of water. And especially if you go outside in the warm summer days, hopefully here soon, plan to play your strenuous outdoor activities for either early or late in the day when temperatures are usually cooler, then gradually build up tolerance for warmer conditions. Take frequent breaks when working outdoors. And especially wear a wide-brimmed hat, sunblock, and light-colored loose-fitting clothing when outdoors. And especially, and lastly, at first signs of heat illness, like dizziness, nauseousness, headaches, muscle cramps, move to a cooler location, rest for a few minutes, and slowly drink a cool beverage. And obviously, and most importantly, seek medical attention immediately if you do not feel better. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. 1.6, I do not have any citizen comments. So moving on to 1.7, we have a student presenter to the Board of Education from Arise Virtual Academy, Caitlin Coleman. Hi Caitlin.
Hello. Hello, everyone. My name is Caitlin Coleman and I am representing Arise Virtual Academy this evening. I'm currently a sophomore and I have been attending Arise for three years. At first, I was a bit apprehensive going into Arise since it is a virtual academy, but since all of my educational experiences prior to COVID were all in person. However, I've heard great things about its staff and teaching techniques. To see if this claim was true, I decided to join Arise as an eighth grader. I was quickly proven wrong at the fact that I was skeptical that a virtual school could be any easier than in-person learning. I was greeted with open arms and easy-to-follow instructions on how to navigate Buzz, which is our learning platform. I quickly got the hang of the program and it grew on me. It taught me discipline and it challenged me to the right degree academically where I needed to be. I have grown so much as a student and I owe it all to Arise. Buzz teaches the material at your own pace and is very easy to understand. My academic skills have grown so much, especially in the past year, to the point where next year I will be taking college classes and two AP classes. My teachers are the best teachers I've ever had and they have helped me so much, especially this year. Mr. Haganbusher, Ms. Bennett, Mrs. Davis, and Mr. Arnold especially have helped me grow, worked with me to correct my mistakes without actually making me feel like I shouldn't have made those mistakes in the first place. Additionally, Arise has offered many opportunities for their students to get out of the house and socialize, not to mention taking a break from the typical grind of school. I believe that this is vital for younger grades such as kindergarten and first grade that are in Arise's program because it teaches them fundamental life skills such as communication and social skills. Some examples of said opportunities are field trips to places like Cave of the Mounds, River Sedge Bowl, which I attended myself, ice skating at the Janesville Ice Arena, and many scoopy nights at our local Culvers. Tomorrow, several of our students and staff are going to movie 16 to watch the new Mario movie. Arise offers countless opportunities for youth apprenticeships and early college education to guarantee students' academic success. Students in grades K through 12 also have the opportunity to come into Arise for some one-on-one help. Wednesdays are the busiest as that is when typically when the high school students attend the lab to get the support they need. Students are also able to help each other and this is especially true on lab days as the students are there in person. Although students have chosen virtual learning, many students still need the support from in-person learning. I made the decision to stick with Arise earlier this year until I graduate. After high school, I want to go to college, UW-Whitewater is what I'm looking at right now, and earn my bachelor's degrees in communication, English, and journalism. And become a developmental editor. I want to go into a writing career because I love to read. That's the short answer. But the longer answer is that reading allows my mind to go places that my physical self can't, such as Hogwarts or Narnia or any of the other examples. And I want to write so I can take my readers along with me on that journey. Because it's a truly wonderful experience. It's such, it's such an out-of-body experience and it's wonderful and I want other people to be able to experience that with me. I love expressing myself with my words, such as making plain hallways turn into beautiful museums with just a couple of letters, words, and sentences. I love that feeling so much that I want to pursue a career in that field. Because of all these wonderful opportunities and resources at my disposal, I will be well-prepared for whatever 2024 and June New Year throws at me because I know I am not alone since I have the amazing teachers and staff at Arise to guide me through. Thank you for all having me in this meeting. Have a wonderful rest of your day.
Caitlin? Thank you Caitlin. And next Wednesday, Commissioner Paul and I are gonna be attending Arise for a visit. So hopefully we can see you and talk to you a bit further. Thank you. Okay, and from Rock River Charter, Ronysha Cabs.
Good evening.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Holsman, School Board Commissioners, and members of the community. My name is Ronysha Cabs. I'm a student at Rock River Charter, enrolled in the e-learning program. As I stated, I'm a senior at Rock River Charter School. Rock River Charter has given me the opportunity to earn credits needed for graduation while allowing me to continue to participate in other activities. Prior to Rock River Charter, I attended Craig High School for my first three years. During my time at Craig, I participated in quite a few activities such as show choir, a cappella, basketball, sis, Black Student Union, and cheerleading. After high school, I will be a part of the Warhawk family attending the University of Wisconsin-Whitewater this fall, double majoring in forensic science and high school science education. Rock River Charter School has had its highest enrollment ever this year. Currently, 199 students attended Rock River Charter. We have had a total of 336 students, ooh, enrolled with us at some point. We're expecting a record number of graduates this year. We have already graduated 110 students with more to come before our graduation celebration on May 31st. Between students graduating and/or successfully transitioning into another program or school, we hold study at a 94.96 success rate. The GED O2 program has maintained a 92% pass rate on the GED tests this year. The United States average pass rate for the GED test stands at a 60%. Out of the number of passed tests, 25% of those students have scored high enough to earn the distinction of college and career ready. Sorry. I'm proud, I am proud to state that the GED O2 program and its teachers continue to be recognized by the Department of Public Instruction as outstanding examples of how GED O2 programs are to be implemented and run. E-learning students have successfully completed over 900 online classes in their pursuit of high school diploma. All seniors in this program are working to finish up classes for May and June graduations. Ramp the reading and math program is working hard to improve reading and math skills to meet the GED O2 requirements. And it will be taking the Star Reading and Math assessments to determine fall placement within the next couple of weeks. The Alternative Education Program at Rock River Charter School continues to involve and shift to meet the needs of students. This year, the program continues in AM/PM session school day, where half of the students attend class in the morning and the other half attend class in the afternoon. Within the session, school is run on an ABC schedule. On Mondays and Thursdays, students attend first, second, and third hour. Class periods on Tuesdays and Fridays, students attend the fourth, fifth, and sixth hours. Wednesdays are set aside to work as a workday for RTI support. This model was implemented during the pandemic to allow for social distancing and showed so much success that as a result has been adapted as the schedule moving forward. Four Rock River Charter School students were selected to receive scholarships through the Adam Sillip Foundation as well as through Black Hawk Technical College Foundation. Mercedes Ackerman and Tyler Mitchell were both selected to receive a $1,000 scholarship each from Adam Sillip Foundation. And Angel Emery was selected to receive a $500 scholarship. Faith Dickerman was selected to receive a $500 scholarship from BTC. Rock River Charter School continues to be the right choice for many students within the school district of Janesville who would otherwise flounder at a traditional high school. Our graduation celebration will take place at the Janesville Center for Performing Arts on Wednesday, May 31st at 6:00 PM. We would love to see all of, all there to congratulate our graduates. Thank you for allowing me to take the time to speak about Rock River Charter School and I would like to thank you for supporting our school.
Thank you. That was a great update. I actually got to see Tyler get his scholarship Friday. One day last week, I went, Wednesday, I got to see him, Wednesday and I got to see him get his scholarship. All right, thank you for that update. Consider approval of the consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Ardry, seconded by Millard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. Commissioner Hannanwell is absent. Board items 3.1, Board welcomes new Craig High School Assistant Principal, Mr. Holsman.
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Zach Gavin. The board approved Mr. Gavin as the Assistant Principal beginning next year at Craig High School. Mr. Gavin currently serves as a Dean of Students at Craig High School and we're looking forward to his leadership, support, and energy. So, Mr. Gavin, if there's anything you'd like to say in behalf of the board about excitement and getting started, but just wanted to make sure we get it. Absolutely.
I'll do what I can to keep it under the five. So to Commissioners of the School Board, Superintendent Holsman, members of the Directors Team, and any Janesville community members who might be watching this online, I would like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to become the next Assistant Principal at Craig High School. I've had an incredible opportunity the last three years to work with a strong cohesive school leadership team at Craig who have mentored me in my first experience as a school administrator, as Dean of Students. I will be forever indebted to them for taking the time to develop me as a building leader as I transitioned out of the classroom three years ago at the end of the pandemic and had my first year as a school leader during the 2020/2021 school, which was an interesting year to transition schools, districts, and roles. I'm thankful to work with hard-working, student-centered staff members at Craig High School, warmly welcomed me into our school community and have put their trust in me over the past few years to help them in any way that I can with our students. I'm excited to transition my role to focus more on instructional leadership and cannot wait to dedicate more time to classroom teaching. I've worked with countless families throughout the past few years and I value them for their continued cooperation. I look forward to continuing to build authentic partnerships with our families for the benefit of all of our students at Craig High School and their education. And lastly, but most importantly, I'm ecstatic to keep working with the amazing students that I get to serve at Craig High School each and every day. I do not take for granted the opportunity that I have to make a positive impact in their lives and contribute to the education of the next generation of leaders and learners in our community. I'm truly humbled to follow in the footsteps of a school leader such as Monty Phillips, who has been a mainstay at Craig High School. I feel a great responsibility to carry on with the consistency and steadfast leadership that Mr. Phillips has displayed at Craig High School for so many years and I do believe that I'm up to the challenge. I look forward to continuing the work that we've started at Craig High School since I joined the staff in 2020 with the goals of improving outcomes for all students, making Craig High School a desirable place for teachers and staff to work, and striving to become the best high school in the state of Wisconsin. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to your new role. 3.2, Consider Approval of Administrator's Recommendation for Dean of Students for Craig High School, Mr. Holsman.
Yeah, that's an interesting segue, right? We have a new hire and now we have a recommendation. But it's also my pleasure to recommend Mr. Barry Holloway. Mr. Holloway is a, currently a teacher in the Hamilton School District, which is a suburb of Milwaukee. We, there were 18 applicants for the Dean of Students. Um, we screened there eighteen applicants for the Dean of Students position. Um, the Craig administrative team and leadership team, um, screened twelve of them, um, brought in six finalists, and, uh, Mr. Holloway is their, uh, recommendation. Uh, Mr. Holloway has, uh, currently serving as an English teacher. He's got a master's degree, uh, from University of Madison, and a Bachelor of Science from Wisconsin Whitewater. Um, we're excited about, uh, the opportunity, um, to extend the offer to Mr. Holloway. So I would need the board to consider that.
I'd move to accept.
I'd like to move to accept the recommendation from administration for, uh, for Mr. Holloway as Dean of Students at Craig High School.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Myers and seconded by Carl Dahmerhausen. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes eight-zero. Thank you. Three point three, presentation and consider approval of employee dental plan, Ms. Johnson.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. We will start directly with the dental plan this evening. First is, um, no increase. Yay, that's the fun part, right? It's a zero percent increase with a, um, five percent cap for twenty-twenty-four. Um, so really asking for approval to not do anything to the dental plan, but keep it the same.
Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Commissioner Murray, seconded by Ms. Herda, Commissioner Herda. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes eight-zero. Thank you, Tina. Three point four, presentation and consider approval of employee healthcare plan effective July first, twenty-twenty-three. Ms. Johnson.
Certainly. Thank you. Yes, so the the health plan is a little bit different this year, right? We've had typically a rate cap for both carriers. This year, we had a rate cap for Mercy. We did not have a rate cap for Dean. So that changed things, and we had to take a look at health benefits through a a little bit different lens, um, for the district. So what we have here is a schedule of the renewals, um, for medical, Dean, and Mercy. Um, Mercy came back at the nine percent rate cap. Dean originally came back at nineteen point nine percent, and our friends at Cottingham and Butler were able to whittle that down to seventeen point nine percent. Um, so that that's what we're dealing with is a a difference in those those rates. What that means for the district going forward is to look at our, um, costs. We are recommending a fifteen-hundred, three-thousand-dollar deductible with an eighty percent co-insurance, um, keeps our costs and rates flat, and, uh, we will look forward to a defined contribution plan. What that means is we take the lowest-cost plan, the district takes the lowest-cost plan, and an eighty-eight, twelve percent distribution between the employer and the employee. The lowest-cost plan was Mercy Care at nine percent, so you will see the rates there for employee, employee spouse, employee child, and family. And then we have the rates for Dean for employee, employee spouse, employee child, and family. Next, what we have is is some options for our employees across the board in terms of current programming. All employees are welcome to continue their Mercy or Dean health coverage. Um, Dean Dean always has, just like Mercy has, the opportunity to switch coverage, so our Dean members can go to Mercy. Um, in this case, our Dean members would see a significant premium reduction if they made that change, and our Mercy employees also always have the opportunity to go to Dean. They can switch over at any time during open enrollment. And another option for all of our employees would be that they would be able to, um, apply for the Family Advantage Health Plan if eligible. Um, that provides zero-dollar coverage to employees with access to another employer-sponsored medical plan, and there's information provided there for for our, um, employees to have have conversations. What would our conversations be? We have an email set and ready to inform our employees and have the conversation with them to get that started. We have a webinar set and an invitation ready to go for our staff on April twenty-seventh at four-thirty to accommodate those individuals who may be coaching or have meetings after after school to participate. We will also be recording that meeting and and be able to provide the information to employees afterward. We also will be looking at educating our employees on a one-on-one basis for those interested and eligible for the Family Advantage Health Plan, and Mercy has designated a care counselor and is talking about some, um, transitioning and how we would transition any employees who would like to move from the Dean plan over to the Mercy plan. With that, I offer any questions from the board.
Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to accept, um, the healthcare plan as presented by the administration.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Herda. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes eight-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three point five, presentation and consider adoption of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget assumptions, Mr. McCray.
So there's no PowerPoint, um, so you have a memo in your packet. I do want to thank, uh, the work of the Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee over the past two months. Uh, they have seen kind of some preliminary snapshots into the district's financial future. Um, the financial future is always of, uh, interest, uh, during the biannual budget cycle, uh, which we're currently in the process of going through, right? So the governor in February proposed the budget. Uh, I think tomorrow is the last joint finance committee, uh, listening session, and that committee will go into work then and probably, uh, determine and then pass on for legislative approval, um, funding for K-12 education. Um, that's a little bit all over the board, um, depending upon, uh, which business manager or superintendent or any other individual you speak to. Uh, so we've taken, if you will, some rather conservative, uh, assumptions moving forward. So, uh, in your packet, uh, I'll kind of just skip down to revenue, uh, and the big-ticket items are we're assuming no increases in the district's revenue limit authority. Uh, we're really kind of assuming a stable amount when it comes to statewide equalization aid, which every district competes for. It's a finite sum, right? It's just kind of divided up depending upon expenditures that each district, uh, submits at the end of the fiscal year from an aid percentage, uh, standpoint. Uh, and we are assuming a one-hundred-dollar increase in per-student categorical aid, uh, both in the current or next coming, uh, fiscal year as well as the subsequent fiscal year. So a hundred dollars for us, uh, if you think about it, is roughly about nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, right? So not really a significant amount of money when you consider a budget our size, right? So then, uh, the other thing we're taking a look at is a five percent increase in special education or students with disabilities reimbursement. Currently, the state, uh, if you will, uh, covers about thirty percent of those costs. Um, we're assuming thirty-five percent. Uh, the governor's proposal is quite aggressive, uh, and again, I think you just try to understand the governor's proposal versus the climate, um, under the dome in Madison, right? So our assumptions are rather conservative on the revenue side. Uh, when it comes to expenses, right, so a big-ticket item for us is obviously our staff. Um, CPI is running, uh, for July one, uh, which is what we'll be bargaining for at an eight percent increase in CPI. Um, for every percentage increase, uh, we essentially, from a district perspective, uh, can look at approximately eight-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, which includes our FICA and WRS contribution, right? So it's significant if you were to do the math, right? Uh, essentially eight-hundred-and-ninety, I didn't do the math and I can't do it in my head, times eight, right, but it's rather significant. Uh, the board may recall last year CPI was four-point-seven percent. Um, that's what the board bargained at, uh, and that netted out, uh, from kind of an overall fiscal impact to wages at about three-point-eight percent. We've modeled five percent. We can model anything, but the model of a five percent CPI increase is really about a net four percent, um, in total wages increasing. Um, we can model six, we can model seven, but when we do that, uh, we drive the budget into a further deficit, and that's really kind of what the Finance Committee has been looking at. Uh, when we talk about the Finance Committee, I'd say two meetings ago, right, we weren't quite sure we were at from a staffing perspective, right? And so we assumed essentially about an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. Um, we worked through, um, administratively and presented to the board a staffing plan, um, and so that really helps because we're looking at essentially twelve-point-five less FTEs, um, right? And so that's really not necessarily, there were no preliminary notices of layoff, right? This is really assimilated through attrition. Um, so that's where we're at, so staffing again is huge. Other things, right, in the board in closed session and just recently approved, uh, a nine percent increase in health insurance, right? We have factored that in, a zero percent, uh, increase in dental. Um, so those are some assumptions, uh, that we have built. We've also looked at open enrollment. There are certain things, just as a reminder to the board, that we really don't know about until October, right? So, uh, we'll look to a preliminary budget approval, uh, in July. Um, that, right, so I know Commissioner Audrey always looks forward to that summer presentation, uh, but we're really essentially assuming, right, and we had a great presentation relative to, uh, enrollment projections, you know, status quo on enrollment, um, status quo on open enrollment in and out. That is a bit of a wild card, so if we have a cushion, right, that could quickly evaporate, right? We hope, though, we're essentially an attractive district where we have more students coming in than going out every year, right? That's, we we really need that. So, um, those are the assumptions. Uh, these are typically brought to you a little bit sooner, but the biannual budget cycle, right, uh, we're kind of waiting. Um, CPI is, you know, huge, and and what do we do from a staffing perspective, right? So, but we've been kind of working with assumptions. Again, we shared those with Finance. We're just really kind of, uh, asking for more formal approval. So when September rolls around and you go, well, hey, I thought, right, we can refer back to the budget assumptions.
Thank you, Mr. McCraezer. Motion to adopt the budget assumptions.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Audrey and a second by Commissioner Millard. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Hearing none. It passes eight-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, a Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee report, Mr. Audrey.
Yes. Um, a couple of things to cover, and our focus really was more on referendum project updates and ESER, um, capital projects and planning and bids. All of that stuff was the focus. Um, we still, due to material delays, shortages, we still can't say we've completed anything from our referendum planning except the boilers. We have, um, substantially those completed, but in some locations, we still need some switch gearing, some things, um, let's say they're a hundred percent complete. Um, but somewhere toward the end of May, we should be closer to the hundred percent, and we're looking forward to that. Um, one of the things that's been, really, the budget's been managed well, um, through the bidding process and the management of J.P. Cullen. Um, so we're able to look at next-level projects. A couple to point out is, so what this is, is still within the referendum, um, spirit of what was passed, um, but then we, with the savings, you can do further projects within those same group of dollars. So looking at, uh, district-wide, um, HVAC building automation, so Mr. Leader will be able to see the whole district and be able to have direct control over individual buildings here at the ESC, um, which that'll be, he hasn't ever had that, so that would be hugely impactful. Fire alarm replacements, um, in quite a few buildings, um, which would be, well, obviously, that's pretty important. Um, and more interesting replacement, a boiler replacement at Marshall Middle School. Um, when Marshall went in, the installation itself, I would say, and this is Greg, that it probably wasn't exactly what it should have been. Um, so we've had quite a few tube replacements within the boiler, um, and it has been really inefficient. So now we're able to, um, really solicit bids and move toward replacement of that. Moving on to the ESER capital projects and bids, today was really a, I guess, the next phase of reviewing Franklin. It was bid day. All of the bids came in for Phase One and Phase Two. Um, Phase One is really the north side building work, um, really this upcoming summer and kind of throughout the year. Um, and then Phase Two is the south side. So it'll be more kind of how do those bids look when, um, Cullen refines and verifies what their scope to what was actually in the bid, but preliminary, I would say, came in potentially slightly over budget, but still within the realm of of acceptableness, um, based on the estimates and things that Cullen had, um, included. Um, so then that shortly sets us up for the next phase in looking at the window replacement at Edison and then the greenhouses and culinary classroom, um, bids at Craig and Parker. So we'll have to see how that goes, but it looks a bit positive at this point. And then lastly, well, Mr. McCray just went over the budget update, um, assumptions that we went through, and I would say the next most important piece is at our next board meeting, we've done a really nice job of managing finances, so it will be a resolution on to the fees and actually pay back early, which is really, um, a huge benefit as we look long-term and the next level of projects that need to be done. And then, then I think there was a presentation just for me, the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative, and it was more of a focus on, so when we have a large sum of money that comes in, what can we do with it? We really can't go out and like put it in the market and go make money, but we can do short-term CDs and various investment methods that are acceptable. Um, so Mr. McCray talked through that, and I'll say, I think it was mostly for me, but that was still, um, quite impactful from an overall understanding of, our money just doesn't sit in the account and really doesn't do anything. Now, as interest rates have gone up, that means we make a little bit more money, but of course, it costs us a little bit more for anything else going forward too, so. That is the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Audrey. Okay, summary of board requests, I have none in my fifty minutes in this role, so maybe next time. All right. Uh, motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Actually, we're just adjourned. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Sorry, yes, thank you, Kathy. Uh, so future meeting dates? Um, would you like to, go ahead, Denise, go ahead.
Um, we will have a Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee meeting on May first at four-thirty P.M. here at the ESC. Our next Board of Education meeting will be on May nineteenth at six P.M. here at the ESC, and there is a tentative Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee meeting on May sixteenth at four P.M. here at the ESC.
Thank you, and I think what we'll do is we'll have, um, Denise send out a survey about committees and, um, any feedback you have on committees you'd like to serve on, um, would be valuable in that, to make sure everybody's serving where they where they would like to. Um, all right, with that, we are adjourned. The board will take a twenty-minute recess and come back in a closed session. We'll come back into work, except not closed session. Thank you. Sorry, I thought it was a call.